Twenty, it's seven PM and we're in the council chambers in the city of Platteville. And I'll call to order this regular meeting of the common council and we'll start with roll call.
Barb Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Barb Stockhausen.
Here.
Robin Klein and Eileen Nichols absent. Both excused.
Uh, the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of the annual tourism report. Uh, for those in the audience, uh, the city contracts with the Platteville Regional Chamber of Commerce as the tourism entity, uh, which receives, um, a portion of the tax collected on motel and hotel room stays. So we'll welcome to the podium representatives from the Platteville Regional Chamber. And as they're coming forward, um, I would note that Kathy Kopp is here tonight. Kathy is the recently retired executive director of the Platteville Regional Chamber. Uh, on our agenda last meeting was proclamation and Adam and Barb and Eileen and I attended a event at the chamber office and presented that proclamation to Kathy at her, uh, at one of her retirement parties.
Thank you Barb. Um, as Barb noted, I am Kathy Kopp, the former executive director of the Platteville Regional Chamber. Wayne Wodars is the new, um, executive director. But because we're representing last year's, um, tourism report, I thought it appropriate for me to do that and I'm just gonna do the introduction and I'll turn it over to Wayne. No, kidding. Um, it's a pretty hefty packet, um, that we put together and, um, I would like to note that the process that we use for the report is the same one that we have been using for a number of years that was approved by the city council. We have, um, seven categories where we allocate room tax dollars and, um, one is for the visitor center. And this year we had over eleven thousand visitors. Um, we handle thousands and thousands of emails and phone calls. And, um, we have seen a surge in our promotion through the website and social media. A second, um, section that we do is destination marketing, which is exactly what it is. The, uh, we have an advertising budget, um, where we do print, radio, social media advertising. We also, um, have a category for website, one for calendar of events. And I always like to explain that the calendar of events is because there are so many organizations that have calendars where we're able to post our events. And we post all community events, they're not just, uh, chamber events. Uh, we also have a public relations, um, category. And a lot of that deals with, uh, our regional partners and, um, contacts that we have. We have a very strong allegiance to the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. I continue to serve on the Governor's Tourism Council representing southwest Wisconsin. Uh, beyond that for at least the next year and a half. Uh, continuing to do, um, my best to promote Platteville and southwest Wisconsin. We also have a category where, um, we allocate funds for events and projects. Specifically, the annual historic reenactment Dairy Days, Hometown Festival Week, and, um, our two ag tourism events, which is Day on the Farm and the Fall Harvest Table Dinner. We also make a specific note to promote the mining of all the Jameson museums. The final category is contract administration, it just takes care of paperwork. Um, but twenty nineteen was a really good year. And one of the notes in your packet is this little graph, this little chart that is one page out of the Department of Tourism's annual report. Now, we don't have the figures for two thousand and nineteen yet, they aren't released until May. They do that during, um, Tourism Week. But the latest report we have is from two thousand eighteen and it's countywide. And Grant County from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen saw a ten point eight one percent increase in direct visitor spending. And that amount of dollars, um, is significant in that it's over fifty-five million. And Platteville receives, um, the kudos for at least half of that. So it's a major, uh, economic boon for not only Platteville but southwest Wisconsin. Um, we've had a lot of good things happen in twenty nineteen. Our regional partners are stronger than ever. Uh, we're members of the Tri-State Tourism Council and the Grant County Tourism Council. And, um, another sheet that I included is, I'm assuming that the council has seen the room tax report. We get this report once a quarter. And, um, I've always appreciated the way the city, um, puts that report together because it does the comparison, so you can see where we, where we've been and where we're going. Um, fourth quarter room tax, um, uh, was down just a bit, um, over the previous year. And looking ahead into twenty twenty, we realize there's gonna be a challenge because we do have one of our lodging properties that's offline. So working the budget for twenty twenty, we did take that into account. And hopefully by the time they open, they reopen, we're gonna see a boon for the rest of the year. Um, but overall, the, um, it's significant when we talk numbers because, um, the, as a, as a, the tourism entity, we received seventy percent of the revenue that is generated from the lodging properties. The city retains twenty-eight percent and the motels and hotels retain two percent. And for the year twenty nineteen, now, I always have to make this justification too, the city numbers don't match the tourism entity numbers. Because the tourism entity is a cash-based accounting system. So when we look at the revenue from room tax in twenty nineteen, or any given year, it's a fourth quarter from the previous year, first, second, and third quarters of that, that year. Whereas this report that is generated by the city shows the four quarters in a year. But, um, what I wanna point out is that just using these numbers, um, the total room tax collected in twenty nineteen was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's huge, it is. Um, and the total room receipts for the four lodging properties is slightly over four million dollars. So it's a big industry, it's very important. Um, and the partnership that we have with the city, we've been the tourism entity since the ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-five, has been a very good, solid one. And the, um, the benefit to the city is that the room tax generated in twenty nineteen, over fifty thousand dollars for the city. So again, that is a significant, um, um, number. And it does show the, um, the work that is, um, being done. And we really appreciate the strong partnership that we have with the city. Looking ahead to twenty twenty, um, not gonna give too much away. The, um, um, next year this time, you'll be hearing from Wayne and he, he'll have all the more updated details about twenty twenty. But we're going into the next year, um, on very solid footing. Um, the events, um, have been fairly well organized. Um, coming along very well for twenty twenty, uh, lots of exciting things. Um, one thing that I would like to note is the, um, we pulled together last year, um, a new holiday committee that is made up of community groups. It's not just a chamber, Chamber initiated it, but we have about twenty-five individuals on that committee to work together to promote Platteville as a destination for the holidays. It was, uh, very successful, we had a lot of positive comments. And we relate that to tourism because we noticed, um, firsthand that there were people from out of town that actually came to, to check out Platteville. So we're hoping that that will grow. Um, like I said, the other events that we've got, um, show a lot of promise, there's a lot of excitement going on. But, uh, overall, things, um, are moving along well. I'm very, um, happy to say that the transition, um, from me to Wayne has gone exceptionally well. And I think things will continue to, uh, move upwardly. And, um, Wayne's been well indoctrinated and, um, getting his, uh, feet solidly planted. So the one thing that Wayne also has is we have the new, hopefully you've all seen it. Uh, we did have it distributed, the twenty twenty community guide. Um, in twenty nineteen, we also produced, um, a new city of Platteville map. And I have no doubt that, um, at the rate that they've been flying off the shelves, that that'll probably have to be reprinted, but that has been an extremely useful tool. So with that, um, I would like to open it up if the council has any questions. But, oh, I neglected, I'm sorry, one part. Wanna talk about the finances. The revenue that came to the tourism entity was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And those categories that I explained before are all broken down. And in your packet, um, with the financial, I, we printed out a breakdown specifically for, that shows where we did the advertising. So in the packet, we always include copies of all of the advertise, print ads that we do. So the numbers, uh, the breakdown for advertising and promotion, um, is, is itemized there. And the amount that was spent on advertising, direct advertising, I like to say that everything, everything that we do, uh, with the, uh, room tax dollars is marketing for the community, but this is the direct advertising, was almost forty thousand dollars of that amount. And we're proud to say that that number keeps increasing and we keep adjusting it. Um, and of note, on the second page of that report, it shows the net income in the negative, five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. So what that means is, um, if there is ever, uh, that number is ever in the red, the chamber has underwritten those expenses. So we always equal out zero. So we try really hard to hit a zero, um, that's very difficult to do. But we just had some opportunities to do some things this year that we just thought that it would prove us to do. So, uh, even though that shows a negative number, the bills are all paid. And, um, the chamber did underwrite that. And I think maybe the last, one of the last things I wanna note is, um, you don't usually see me up here dressed quite like this, but I'm here promoting, um, a big event for Platteville. Um, we should all be very proud that, uh, Pioneer Men's Basketball are conference champs. And why do I bring that up? Because there was a big game on Thursday night. We know people will be coming from out of town, family, friends, fans, and they stay in the hotels. And once they win on Thursday, there's another game on Saturday, right? Um, that I guarantee you, the hotels are gonna see a boon, which is gonna be good for the entire community. So go Pioneers. So are there any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Okay.
Okay, again, thank you.
You wanna say anything?
Wayne?
Just look forward to reviewing the numbers with you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into, uh, the business part of our agenda. So first of all on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. On the consent calendar tonight, we have the meetings from the special and the regular meeting on February eleventh. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, I have none tonight. Licenses, we have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the Main Street program for the ribbon cutting, uh, Business Mingle, which is tomorrow night at the Hive. Uh, Roundtree Gallery, uh, Friday night, uh, for their, uh, four to seven thirty PM tattoo show. And, uh, next Friday night, March sixth, to Saint Mary's Catholic Church for their Lenten fish fry from four thirty to seven thirty. We also have several one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol. There's also a street closing permit for Second Street between Main and Furnace Streets, Mineral, between Oak and Third, for the Fifth Annual Southwest Music Festival by the, by the Chamber, which is scheduled for Saturday, May eighteenth, or Ju, pardon me, July eighteenth, where May came from, from seven AM to midnight. So do I hear a motion?
Big motion to approve all the items listed under the consent calendar.
Okay.
Motion by Isaac and a second by Ken to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Uh, I think people are aware of our process of, uh, registering on the green sheet if you want to speak before the council. And I do have, uh, it is customary for those people who want to speak, uh, on an agenda item for us to hold those green sheets until the end. But we have one person who is not speaking on an agenda item, rather is speaking on behalf of the students at UW Platteville. So Ben?
Hello, Ben Belkin, Ben Belkey, eight hundred South Chestnut Street. Um, so I'll hand this to you, Isaac. Um, so what's being passed down is these are, um, so they're all different, um, but, um, those, that's kind of an analysis that we're doing at, um, both at the city level, state level, and federal level, um, for student senators. Um, and they're each about different, the different resolutions and the different information that's being sent through, um, our, uh, our city as well as our state, um, anything like that. Um, and it's both to help our student senators as well as the representatives who represent us understand some of the student views. Um, it's, it's, I try to make it as, uh, least opinionated as possible and more fact-based of, of what, what's affecting students. Um, and with this, I plan on emailing, uh, both Barb and Adam, um, so, so that you guys can receive those and see maybe some of those views. Um, again, I try to be as, uh, accurate as possible, so.
So for instance, uh, deregulation from the PSC, that regulation, he's given an overview of what it is. He's talked about areas of support and then areas of concern.
Yep.
And so if there's any.
Correct.
Area of concern, then it, from the student perspective, uh, uh, Ben would note that on this paper.
Correct.
Which Adam would receive and could then.
Correct.
Perhaps address.
This is, and I modeled this off of, so, um, the UW system sends these to, um, myself, Kirsten, who's my vice president, um, and also our vice chancellor of, of external affairs. Um, and they've received, uh, a very similar example of this from the state about, um, the, the UW system's position on certain state legislation. Um, so I wanna do the same for the students since I found it beneficial, um, being able to dissect those bills like that. Um, and they did it the same exact way, uh, very fact-based, didn't really give their opinion, just how it would affect, um, pros and cons. Uh, if there's ever a time when there's something that, that really doesn't affect students and you see no concerns or no support, that doesn't mean we don't support it. That just means, obviously, that, that it just wouldn't, wouldn't affect the students.
So for instance, tonight, on the agenda is the Oak Street parking lot, it's reconstruction. And, and you, there's no area of concern for.
Correct.
Student body on reconstructing that parking lot.
Correct, yep. Um, but then obviously, an area of concern that I put on there is more parking. Um, that's always available for spring, uh, so, something like that. Um, but I'll be sure to send that up so that, so that can get on, whatever it needs to get on and, um, sent to whoever. Um, also, uh, finally getting to my report, um, Platteville's Voice twenty twenty. Uh, the date got, got moved, um, to March thirty-first. The reason for this is, um, uh, it, it worked better, uh, to get more people to come to our event. Um, and it's still from six PM to ten PM. Um, it, it's still open to the public, um, we're gonna, it's gonna be an expo style as well as with, um, panels there. Um, we're really excited for it, uh, we have Common Ally, which is, which I mentioned before, but they're an outside group who, um, who's really good at dissecting a lot of the politics and, um, dissecting, uh, what exactly people need to know about presidential candidates. Um, so they're gonna be partnering with us to help us, as well as registering to vote is a huge one, obviously, especially with upcoming elections. So we're hoping to catch that swing, um, right after, right, right after, uh, Super Tuesday and right before we hit the, um, uh, our own primary. Um, so we're hoping to do that. Um, uh, I, I just passed around legislative analysis, as well as we're doing that, like I mentioned, for the state and, uh, the federal level. Um, and then the last one, which, which already got mentioned, uh, the men's basketball game that is, starts at seven PM, um, it is the semifinals. You can either, uh, for example, tomorrow, you can go into the Athletic Center and pick up a ticket ahead of time, or you can wait till, to get it at the court or at the entrance. Um, but, and, and it is Thursday, so that is all I have. Yep. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ben.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on our agenda are reports. Boards, commissions, and committee minutes, uh, Water and Sewer Commission, uh, Ken or Isaac, any comments?
No addition.
And the Safe Routes Committee, Jason?
No addition.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our action item. We only, we only have one tonight. That is the Resolution twenty dash oh-three, providing for the sale of one point two seven million dollars in taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series twenty twenty A. And Nicola, would you like to make the introduction?
I will, yes, just to provide some background. And then we also have Dawn Gunderson-Schill, uh, from Ellis, our municipal advisor, to, uh, to present on the, um, proposed bond issue also. So back in two thousand eighteen, the city borrowed one point three million dollars as part of the development at, uh, Ruxton, the Pioneer Ford Development, which is in TID seven. And the city borrowed the one point three million from the State Trust Fund. Uh, the term on that loan was twenty years with a fixed annual rate of four percent. The loan was guaranteed, um, through the developer agreement by General Capital. And that provided for the principal and interest payments as well as the base property taxes. If the tax increment in any year, um, would be less than the city's annual cost on that, uh, debt, the developer would pay the difference. Due to current trends in interest rates, uh, Ellis has advised us that we could, um, refund this loan, uh, and save some money for the TID. And so, um, uh, Ellis performed an analysis, uh, which provided, um, an estimated savings of a hundred and ten thousand. Um, and so we are, uh, in the process of pursuing that refinance, which is, um, why we're bringing this resolution forward today. I, I do wanna let you know that, um, we've been in touch with the developer, General Capital, um, and, uh, to give that consent for this refinance. Now, it would actually, uh, it, they have guaranteed the debt service. We expect the increment on this property will be larger than the debt service. But, um, this would actually lower, uh, the amount that they would have to guarantee because the debt service would decrease. Um, nevertheless, they still have to give their consent and they have to get the consent of key stakeholders in the agreement. And so, um, we will have to wait for that consent to come back before we can, uh, proceed. Uh, but in the meantime, um, Dawn is here to present, uh, the, uh, the refunding bond, um, for this loan.
Thank you Nicola. Um, I, we've provided you with a copy of a pre-sale report and this should look familiar to other debt financing that we've worked on with the city. Um, as part of our relationship as your financial advisor, we periodically look at all your outstanding debt. Interest rates have certainly been declining and actually have even been declining since we pulled this together. Um, so we'll continue to look at anything else that might be out there. So we brought this forward as a potential refunding opportunity. And, uh, while the developer is giving an opportunity to, to vet this with their team and, um, advise that their willingness or non-willingness to move forward, as Nicola mentioned, your tax increment district is, um, this is part of TID seven. So if that debt service is lower and their increment is higher, they don't have to support that. It could help the TIF close earlier. So I mean, I think it's a good move if the city is able to do that. But again, um, I think we have to be in kind of a holding pattern. So the plan would be to issue this, as we have in the past, as a competitive bond issue, take it out to the market. The city currently has a double A minus rating with S and P, so we would, we would contact them and hold another rating call and have the issue rated. Um, we would allow for similar provisions as we have in the past. Um, allow for term bonds so they can group maturities, it makes it more attractive, attractive to the, to the investor, as well as, um, allow for a, the minimum and a maximum bid on the issue. So any premium that we would get, we could use to downsize and reduce the principal amount we're borrowing. Um, the plan is, we would use your, your team that you've had before, which is Quarles and Brady. Um, if we had term bonds, we would recommend a paying agent as well as, as we've done in the past. We don't necessarily see, um, uh, premiums on these, so we may not be dealing with a premium taxable. A lot of times comes in as a discount bid. And again, we would have, um, Standard and Poor's as the, as the rating agency. So we've, we've structured this with the sizing, including estimates for all those issuance expenses at one million, two hundred and seventy thousand. That would give you enough sufficient funds to pay off the State Trust Fund loan. On page eight of this document, we've got a comparative schedule. Um, it's, this is the pre-sale report, including your packet. Um, so as, as Nicola mentioned, the State Trust Fund loan is a fixed rate at four percent. Uh, these were, these interest rates were applied here, were, were rates we received on a taxable sale back on January twenty-first. Uh, we actually have seen rates drop even since then. So, uh, and obviously with the, the stock market situation, there's a flight to quality and there's a shift into the bond market which bumps demand. Uh, so it's potentially, if we move forward with this, you could even see a little bit lower rates than we're having here. But again, they are estimates at this time, they'll be locked in at the day of the sale. So because of that rates, the annual savings is projected in that far right. So we've structured it to be fairly level savings, um, recognizing that we have to sell this in five thousand dollar blocks. So you'll see a little bit of variance on an annual basis. But it, it's intended to be somewhat of a level savings throughout the issue size. And as Nicola mentioned, in the, you know, over the life of that debt, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is our projections for that savings. We've also included a forecasting model, which we've vetted with Nicola on, uh, to District Number Seven. Um, it doesn't, didn't really change the year in which the district would close. It just, you know, would close with a little bit more positive, um, uh, balance at the end of, of the day for that, uh, debt issue. At least I don't believe it changed the year, I could be off on that.
Yeah, I'm not shocked on my.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I, I looked at the before and after, but I, I, it seems to be that it's pretty close to the same timing. So, um, again, this was general obligation debt when you issued it, State Trust Fund. So it really is, is within the limitations of, of the planning that we've done with you in the past in terms of how much outstanding debt you have. Uh, again, the last page of this document is, shows where interest rates have been over the last twelve months. Uh, this is a tax exempt rate, but it would trend similar to the taxable. Uh, we actually have seen that if, in February, um, we're at the lowest we've been in that last twelve-month period. The rates have even gone down lower since the schedule was prepared. So, uh, again, the, um, some of the, the MMD numbers, which is the municipal market data, hit, uh, historic lows this morning, so, you know, rates are, are pretty favorable. So anyway, um, the timing for this. for this, if, if approval comes from General Capital, we would plan to prepare an official statement. We would schedule a rating call. If all goes well, we would be back on March 22nd with the competitive results of the sale and resolutions for you to consider at that time, and close on it April 9th. You'd pay off the State Trust Fund loan on May 1st. But again, we're considering that to be a little bit fluid until we get the final okay from the developer on this particular loan. But I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
Questions of Dawn.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
So the total loan will be less than the $1.3 million. We paid off some already, and now it's gonna be less?
Less than the original loan you have. The, the amount needed, you will make, you've made your, or will make your March 15th payment to the State Trust Fund. So this would be what's remaining on that loan that would be due on May 1st with any accrued interest, plus the cost of issuance. So the savings is net all of those numbers.
My question is, does General Capital Group, Group actually need up to the $1.3 million? I'm not, I'm not talking about what's already paid off, but do they actually need the money?
You provided them those funds back in 18 when you?
Yes, yes, in 2018.
In 2018.
Do they actually need the money, since now the loan's gonna be cheaper? Will the loan actually be less, less to them at this time?
What, what was done back in 2018 is, General Capital came to you and said, in order for us to complete this project and get all the pieces together, we need some assistance from the city for a principal amount of $1,300,000. So you gave them $1,300,000. The way you raised the money to give that to them is you took out the loan from the state. So the difference would have been the interest expense. They guaranteed that if your, their development wasn't enough to make the payments, they would come up with a shortfall, which I, you know, the way the development is delayed and the timing of not all of it comes online, they have provided shortfall payments to you. So now what we're really saving is, the principal is basically gonna be the same, because you've already paid off some of the principal. It's the interest is where we're saving the money. So it's just the cost of financing that $1.3 million is going down by, by refinancing it now, because it's gonna reduce the, the cost of the interest between, and the principal and interest combined to be lower.
So the cost to General Capital is actually less?
And, and it's only less to them based upon what they need to guarantee. So the only, they've already made the payments. Likelihood going forward, they will no longer have to make any shortfall payments. So it's, it's really, the savings will come to the TIF, not to General Capital.
As General Capital pays the property taxes on the Ruxton Apartments, that is more than enough, or is anticipated that it'll be more than enough to cover the debt service payments, whether or not we refinance. So they, they are not saving any money unless, the only way that might happen is if the property value, if it went through another 2008 and property values all plummeted, and, and we got to a point where they, their property taxes were not enough to cover the debt service payments, then, then they would have to guarantee those debt service payments. And in that circumstance, then, then maybe, they might see a little bit of savings through us during this refinance. But we're not anticipating that they would get to that point, because we're anticipating that the property taxes will more than cover the, the loan payments.
Now, as far as all the costs of this new loan, who's paying for all the costs? Is General, General Capital gonna pay any of that at all? Because they're getting, to me, it looks like they're getting some of the benefit.
Their, their, the costs are included in the borrowing. So the costs are included in the $1,270,000. The cost to do the financing is included in that principal amount. So you're trading off the loan that you had, or the outstanding balance of the loan you had, with, with a new outstanding debt that in principle is probably a little bit higher than what was the principal due on the existing debt, because you've paid some of that principal off already. So the savings is net all of that cost. So the, really, the benefit at this point to General Capital is only their security that they're providing. So again, the projection, as, as it is now, the, the value of that property would be enough to make the payments on an annual basis. So the only benefit General Capital would be having is, is their pledge to secure the loan is, is lower. And like Nicola said, right now, they're, they're in a position to be able to pay $95,000 of principal and interest every year. This would reduce that down from the $95,000, anywhere between three, three and a half, or $3,500 to $89,000 or $9,000 a year. So it's just the security pledge that they've made to make those payments, their, their exposure for that is going down. But the likelihood of them to have to come up with any shortfalls is somewhat limited unless the value of their development drops, to the point that you're not collecting $95,000 in taxes, or $90,000 in taxes. So, so that's why it seems a little bit interesting that they are not gunghole on wanting to do this. But, but they've got probably more of a team to answer to, you know, the banks that, they had, we did tax credits on this, and the bank that provided their lending. It's probably all tied together somehow, so.
But the, the question of the issuance cost, that's the one that bothers me the most, because I see them as getting part of the benefit. And I thought, well, they should pay part of the cost of issuance. And you say that issuance costs are part of the loan?
They're part of the loan, correct.
Yeah, I see the concern you're bringing, you're bringing up, Ken. The way to, the other way to think about how this benefits this, the city is, if you think about, starting from scratch, either way, we took out essentially a $1.3 million loan that was given to General Capital to make this project happen. So if we do nothing, that's still is on the table. They have to pay that no matter what. So yeah, there, there was that one-time initial issuance cost for that $1.3 million. By doing this refinancing, essentially what we're doing as a city is, that $1.3 million is on our debt capacity, not General Capital's. So one way to think about this is, by doing this refinancing, we're essentially freeing up $116,000 over the course of the new loan, that now gives us the ability, if there's a project within that timeframe, we now can look at $116,000 project, or we don't, and we essentially just kind of keep it the status quo. So that's, that's the way we're looking at this as a city, is it's freeing up, yes, there, there is the additional issuance costs, I agree, but what those issuance costs are getting us is additionally $116,000 in debt capacity that now, over the course of, had we done nothing, over the next, you know, 10 to 15 years, it's now giving us $116,000 over the course of that time that we wouldn't have before.
Within the tax increment district. That's a good way to describe that, Adam, yeah. So the TIF is really the benefit. The, the big benefit here is the TIF, not General Capital. I mean, General Capital just reduces their amount of guarantee exposure. But if they were making the debt service payments, I would agree that they should support some of the front, but they're not. They, they probably won't have to, because the taxes they're paying on their development is what's paying for the debt service. Really, the benefit at the end of the day is the tax increment district. So it either frees up money for other projects, cash within the district, or the district can retire a little earlier, or when it retires, there's more money to distribute back to everybody.
But Ellis handled the initial, the first loan?
That, when, when we first did this, we advised you to go to the State Trust Fund, which the State Trust Fund doesn't have any fees. You can go to, the city prepared the loan documents and went to the straight, finance that. So we recommended you do that. We didn't get paid to, to do that. So this refunding, right now, the State Trust Fund would not provide you the savings if you went to them to refinance, for two reasons. The state wouldn't allow you to refinance it, unless you were borrowing new money from them to a certain level of, of amount. And their rates are not, right now, are not near as favorable as the market rates are. So if we were to do a side-by-side comparison, should you be able to refinance with the state, you'd still be better off paying the issuance expenses to get this, these sort of rates versus the state. I think the, the state is at 375, is that something?
Oh, right, yeah.
So 375 there, and we're looking at rates where our highest maturity here is like 2.9. So overall, the cost with the issuance expenses is still a better financing option for you.
This is a little different question. Do you provide advice to cities as far as whether a project is a good project or not, as far as economics?
We...
Economic growth?
We, we do. We, we have, we have a staff...
My question is, were you asked on this project?
What, what, and our, what our staff did on this project is, we looked at the overall sources and uses of the development, and whether or not there was a return of, of an investment return to the developer. And there would not have been a reasonable return for the developer without this assistance. So there was some done, work done back then when this was done, by members of our team. So we did what was the but-for analysis on that development.
But you did, but it was all financial. So, I mean, Ken, they didn't evaluate the developer as to construction?
No.
No.
None of that.
Type of construction, or that kind of thing. It was a financial analysis.
It was a gap analysis.
But, but for example, the developer got the property for a dollar.
That was all factored into all of that?
I know, that was, but the city paid $982,000 for the property.
The, I mean, I'm assuming, this is the library block, right?
No.
This is the hotel?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is Ruxton.
Finer.
Then I don't know that we did do anything.
Sorry?
I'm not sure that we did anything on that. It wasn't me.
You reviewed the pro forma.
Frank did the pro forma? Okay. So someone on our team did the analysis of that. We, we have a, someone that was a former, former, worked in the development world, and so he, he knows how the numbers are run to determine if a development has got a gap financing or not. So all of that was taken into consideration.
But you, you got my question and my comment, that they only paid a dollar for the property.
So that was all built into that calculation?
I know, but I'm just looking at what the city got in return. In other words, when I was on, when they came to the council, I was recommending that this, this developer, General Capital Group, pay $500,000 for the property.
Yeah, and I wasn't involved in doing the numbers calculation, so I can't give you the details on that, but that...
We need to come back to the question at hand.
I go back to my original question. Do you give advice to cities as far as whether a project is a good project or not?
We, we do the gap analysis. We do an analysis that says whether assistance is necessary to make the project financially feasible. So if the project were to happen, there's obviously sometimes required contributions to the project. And that analysis was done. Whether it's a good project or a bad project for the community, those are decisions I think the community has to make.
Okay. Any other questions on Resolution 20-03, providing for the sale of $1.27 million taxable general obligation refunding bonds? If there's no other questions, I'm wondering if there might be a motion.
I move to approve the new loan of $270,000. $1,270,000.
So you have moved to approve, adopt Resolution 20-03?
Yep, adopt the resolution.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
And I have a second from Jason, so we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
And Nicola, we'll wait to hear what the outcome of the discussions by the developer and that team is. All right, let's move along then in our agenda to the items, information, and discussion. The first one, A, is Resolution for Deregulation of the Plattville Sanitary Sewer Utility from the Public Service Commission. This comes, we'll hear from Howard.
Thank you. Currently, Plattville is one of only three sanitary sewer utilities that are directly regulated by the Public Service Commission. What that means is that any request for changes to rates, fees, has to go to the Public Service Commission, and they must determine what is there. If we're not under the Public Service Commission, the city of Plattville determines those rates and fees. The Public Service Commission has the authority to review rates established by the city if they receive a complaint that the rates are unfair or do not correspond to the cost of service. So they're basically an appeal authority. The basic argument for deregulation is local control. City has, would have the flexibility and authority to establish sewer rates. Most communities would pay an engineering or a financial services firm to help them establish those rates. If we want to establish a rate for phosphorus discharge, or chloride discharge, we can incorporate that into our rate structure. If we want to have increasing or decreasing rate structures, block structures on our larger customers, as far as a sewer rate it can. I need to correct the statement, the next statement in here. We can't reconnect, we can't change our sewer rates, because the water is what we connect or disconnect. But the, the city can do inflationary increases to its sewer rates. Just, you know, if we determine that we need a 1.5% inflationary increase on January 1st, boom, we, we, we can do that. The argument against it is basically to deflect local criticism for increasing the rates. What ends up happening a lot of times is, and especially in the small communities, when it's time to increase rates, we have members of the public come to the local body and complain about having to pay those increased rates on fixed incomes or other issues. And in some cases, those local authorities defer the increases because of that local pressure. When you're regulated by the PSC, then increases can be deflected or blamed on they, them in Madison and the PSC. You know, if, if a community is locally regulated, sometimes when they defer increases, and then they need to borrow money for a project, the banks or bond agencies realize that the current rates cannot cover those costs, and it would not be unusual for rates to go up 50, 100% or more, because they haven't kept up with normal rate increases. The Water and Sewer Commission approved a requi, motion to request staff to take actions to deregulate the sanitary sewer. One of the requirements is to have the governing body, you folks, pass a reg, resolution requesting the deregulation. And so we've enclosed that draft resolution.
Do we have any questions on this? This is a discussion item for tonight. The Water and Sewer Commission has reviewed this. Is it not true that if we go for a rates, increase in rates to the PSC, our staff, in fact, prepares the rate case, or the case for a rate adjustment?
We, we do a lot of work in conjunction with the Public Service Commission. Barb Johnson happens to be here. She knows all about doing that sort of thing. But it's, it's kind of a collaborative thing. They provide a lot of the financial information and, and work together on that to request those items from the PSC. Whether we hire an engineer or a financial services firm to assist us with that in the future under deregulation, I'm thinking that a lot of the same information would be required from our financial office.
So do we have a cost analysis on this? Did the Water and Sewer Commission review a cost analysis?
We did not. Part of the issue is the timelines for Public Service Commission to increase rates. And, and it... And it, we believe, after speaking with a lot of folks, that it will take twelve to eighteen months to implement a lot of these new rates that we're requiring, that we want to implement, especially for things like phosphorus and to have proper rates for upcoming projects. One of the elders, elders identified that we needed to have rate increases periodically in order to keep up with our, our, keep up with the, with everything.
So, so my question, pardon me, we don't know if this will cost us more or less than it's costing right now. And it would be our utility customers that would pay that, whatever it is, more or less?
I mean, I would, I would say that there was a cost associated with continuing with the PSC in regulating the sewer rates because it takes such a long time to get a regular rate case, which is, you know, a twelve to eighteen month process just to, to get approval for an increase. And when we did the long-range financial plan update, we can see that with the infrastructure replacement that we need right now in, in the wastewater plant, we have to be able to increase rates to cover the debt service on the money that we have to borrow in order to be able to do that, infrastructure improvements. And so without deregulating, it, it, it hampers our ability to keep up with the maintenance on our, on our infrastructure.
So that cost is a hidden cost?
So, yeah. We already have a long-range financial plan that is, that is assembled by the municipal advisor. And as you may remember, when, when they presented the utility portion, there's, there's a number of different components that are all interrelated and mandated by the state. And so it's very useful to have them do that. Because they're already doing that work, I, I would imagine that the additional cost for a, a, a rate analysis would not be substantial. We could definitely get a quote on that.
And does the PSC charge us for these rate analyses?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
And so the comparison would be how much that charge would be?
Yeah, there's another thing we can look into too, is typically if you deregulate from the PSC, what a lot of municipalities tend to do is use their actual auditor firm to do a analysis. So that's something potentially we could look into. I don't know if currently Johnson Block does that.
Currently, the Johnson Block submits our PSC report. I supply a lot of the information to them. And then the PSC, I fill in information for them and do a simplified rate case every year. The simplified rate case is good for up to five years. This year, we will have to do a conventional rate case, which normally is like around six to twelve months that it takes the PSC to do that. They charge a minimal fee for the simplified rate case. But then if you do the conventional rate case, they charge more because it takes more time.
Yeah, and the, and the other reason mainly that other municipalities tend to go with either a financial advisor or, you know, their auditor is because again, that's a third-party analysis. So it just provides a little bit more flexi- not flexibility, but concrete evidence that showcases that, you know, we're not just jacking rates because we feel like it. It's, it's basically, you know, we've had the analysis done that proves that it's the case. It's kind of that same thing again. That's why you go to the PSC. That's why municipalities tend to use either a financial advisor or, you know, your auditor to kind of verify that those rate increases are required.
Ken or Isaac, do you have anything to add as members of the Water and Sewer?
I have a question. I probably should know it, as far as the answer. It says deregulation of sanitary sewer utility. Why aren't we putting on there water and sewer utility?
Um, state regulations, state requires the water utility be regulated by the Public Service Commission.
So all the other cities are the same situation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Some of the costs, when we were talking at the, the meeting we had, Delta Three was there. So the first time or the second time, we would have some costs to do it. And they felt that the second, third time, fourth, going on, we would have the information it needed that we'd be able to reduce our timing and the cost as well because we could do a lot of the work in-house instead of having to hire a third party every time to do it, so.
And instead of having to send it. I mean, I was on Water and Sewer once when, you know, now we have this hearing and you had to come here and it seemed to like to go on.
And then one thing that we noticed with, with the rate increases, you know, if we submit for a, say, a standard rate increase and that's what we're hoping to get, all of a sudden they come back twelve months later, no, you can't have that. You just got to go to a basic or lower rate. You don't really know what you're going to get until that time. Or if we, I mean, this is just an example, say, every year, at this point, say, we need to increase one percent. We know we're going to increase one percent, so we know what we're getting at that time, so.
Hard if you're counting on the rate to be increased because you have that much expenditure and then somebody says no. It does make budgeting a trial for sure. Anybody with any other questions on this deregulation request, Resolution twenty, not a signed number, forwarded to us from the Water and Sewer Commission? Okay, we'll move on to our next information item then, is amendments to Chapter Six, animals. This was on for information last time. It's again on for information. Joe, do you have anything you?
Yeah, I don't have any additional information.
Did anybody approach you about anything?
Actually, I, I thought we had things covered pretty thoroughly, but I, I received a question about somebody that said, "Well, does that mean I can or cannot have an alpaca in the city?" And we didn't include that one, so you think you include everything? We missed that one, so, right.
So what did you get from?
It was kind of jokingly, but.
Oh, it was kind of joking.
It was still.
It was still there. Okay. Ben, would you like to come to the microphone and read your analysis? I quickly read that. So from a student perspective, the students did look at this ordinance or, yeah, ordinance, amendments to Chapter Six.
Yeah, the only concern, so obviously the area support that I was able to come up with was, if you own a pet within the area, you know what the, what the rule is and it fits probably with whatever community you're coming from, since we are getting on board with what other communities do. The only area of concern, we would have to do more investigation on our end, on it. But we do have our, our campus animal house, which I think it's on the backside of it, which I can pass around the different animals that they have on there. Most of them, I believe, are, are through the DNR. There is one that, like, they have a, a, a permit through the DNR to own them. But we'd have to do more, more investigation on our end to see if all the animals on there are up to code. Because there is one on there that they do own an opossum or, or a species of opossum. And I think, I think that's one of the things, marsupials, that opossum is a marsupial. And we have, our, our chief of staff, Zach Adams, you might have met him before. He, he is part of Animal House, so he asks his advisor. So whenever we get that back, I'll be able to forward that up. But that's the only area of concern we were able to find. But again, I'm, I'm not completely sure yet, so.
All right.
Thank you.
We did have Dan. Dan would like to speak, and he doesn't actually know if he's speaking in favor or against. He'd just like to speak.
Okay. My name's Dan Lynch. Three forty-five Bailey Avenue is my address. As most of you are aware, I own Bernie's Buds, and we have a number of dogs. My concern is we have, I am the only person who, in my knowledge, in the last thirty or so years, has actually filed for a private kennel license here. So I feel like this impacts me a lot more than it impacts a lot of other people. My question is, we invested in the house, we invested in the, the setup. We have a whole series of kennels. We've been licensed now with the city for two years. My question, because this originally, I believe stemmed from the conversation that we had about a year ago. But, yeah, we are now in our, in our second year of being licensed. My question is, are we going to be grandfathered in with the existing rules for this private kennel license? And that's a question that I have for whoever can answer that.
So the private kennel license now would allow you up to ten dogs?
Right now, it's up to ten dogs. And obviously, I have the, the list of changes here.
Yep, that's where I went to private kennels, yeah.
You probably have it as well. Right. So we have a series of kennels in our backyard. We have the capacity for up to ten. The ordinance as it stands says up to ten. And so if we, if, if the ordinance goes through and the question becomes, in this upcoming year, when we go to refile for this kennel license, is it going to be with the existing rules or is it going to be with this new set?
So Dan and I had this conversation previously. So I did pose that question to the city attorney and provided him with a copy of the, the draft ordinance. Unfortunately, he hasn't got back to me yet, so I, I don't have an answer at this time. But that was the exact question I asked him is, you know, basically how much, how much of his operation is grandfathered in and how much of it is subject to new rules at the time of? Obviously, he's got a license for this year, so there's no issue at this point. But at the time, you know, the next license comes due, what, what rules carry over and what don't. So I, I, I will be getting that answer. I just don't have that answer yet.
Okay. If that does get grandfathered in, that makes my life a lot easier. If it does not get grandfathered in, this is a series of changes that were specific to my house, which is very interesting that the city knows so much about my house, to specifically make it not possible. So for example, no more than eight, not ten, dogs and cats in combination. Well, we have three cats. We have seven dogs. If this goes through and I have to abide by it in this upcoming year, it's effectively an eviction notice. And so obviously, that becomes a problem. So I guess my question, Joe, you, you, you did the writing of this?
Yes, most of it.
Well, I, I would have to say that the Plan Commission.
Most of it is borrowed from other communities and then we present it to the Plan Commission and we narrowed down the language.
Um, so.
I believe the or cats was actually added by the Plan Commission.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It wasn't added by Joe.
That, that's my first question. Is the meowing of cats too excessive that we need to have them in here? What's, what's the reason for adding the cats?
Bring this all to the Planning Commission instead of before the council?
I mean, the Plan Commission has seen this, so if, I mean, not only seen it, but I think we've had it on the agenda for like three months.
The citizen comments.
Right. Well, this is questions on this ordinance.
Okay.
Which is appropriate. So one of your questions is why eight and why the combination of dogs and cats?
Right. What study was done specifically to show?
I, I think that the study that was done is we had several people on the Plan Commission. So the Plan Commission is a group of nine. And people on that Plan Commission went back and looked up ordinances for other towns. People brought in Monroe's ordinance. They brought in, I mean, there were ordinances from all over the place. And people would read and they would say, "Well, did you know that maybe that would be good for us to do?" So it was a discussion item and that's how some of these things got added. So we can go back to the Plan Commission, but the Plan Commission is the one that added, I mean, and the cats was kind of an actual late addition when, I don't know, somebody brought in something about, yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be my question on a lot of this. In order for us to take away the rights and liberties of the people of the city, there needs to be a clear and definite reason behind it. There needs to be someone who's going to benefit from it. Because every law that we write takes away a freedom. And we need to make sure that we're not taking away freedoms for no good reason. So if we're taking away the reason for a cat, there needs to be a clear and justified reason for that. And a third-party study outside of anybody here should definitely be done before we ever consider something like this. What kind of study are we doing that shows that this is of, of value? What kind of study are we showing that eight is an appropriate number instead of ten? Now, ten is the number of dogs that you would find in a dog sled team. That would be, that would be the reason probably why it was originally that way.
I have no idea why it was that way. Like I said, we did a study of other ordinances and some limited it to four and some limited, I mean, so there were lots of even tighter regulations and said that, so then there was discussion. Do we want to go down to four? Where do we want to be? And so using all of the information that we gathered from all of these other ordinances, this is how we came. So if one of your concerns is eight, let's move on to another of your concerns.
Okay, another of my concerns is the, the acreage needed. In order to have four dogs, it's going to be fifteen thousand square feet according to this and an extra three thousand square feet per additional animal. If we apply that to my property, I have six thousand square feet, which would not, would not suffice for this if this goes through and I have to comply with this, which again, would be an eviction notice.
So you think that the property requirements are too stringent?
If, if this is what needs to be complied with in the future, yes. If I could be grandfathered in to the existing ones, then that's a different story.
And again, I'm sure that this would, these numbers didn't come from somebody studying your property. They came from a series of ordinances that we looked at and perhaps state regulations and other things. So please don't, I mean, you, I hear you're taking it personally. I understand why you would think that, but please.
I'm still going.
Please understand that these items come from other communities.
And again, I would, I would stress that a third party should look into these things. The next thing I have in here that I thought was interesting is it says that the building inspector, so for item number, what is it? C it used to be. Before issuance of a license, a number of people have to come out, including a licensed veterinarian. And now in here, it says a licensed veterinarian added in is selected by the city. And now I, I wonder, is any one licensed veterinarian better than any other one licensed veterinarian? Is there a reason, other than enhancing corruption, is there a reason for adding this? Because, yeah, if you have one veterinarian and only one veterinarian that can do it, well, now you can, as a city, you can threaten that veterinarian, you can bribe that veterinarian. It, it adds some risk for the citizens of the town.
Okay, so that's your third concern, Joe. You're noting these concerns, so we can come back and discuss them. Okay.
How many more? Can you give me a number so I know where you are?
Uh, let's see.
We're on page fifteen now.
Yep.
Okay.
So now we have in number six here, kennels shall include an enclosed shelter and all this kind of stuff that describes that the shelter shall include a window, a skylight, or other opening. I'm a little surprised that dogs would need a skylight. To this, this seems like a bit of overkill, especially if the city is concerned about barking dogs. If I have, if I leave the dogs outside in a kennel because now I have to have this whole series of extra stuff in there, well, now someone's going to say, "Hey, these dogs are barking. You have to have all these things, but you can't actually use them." So I add extra things that you have to use, have to have but can't use.
Okay, that's a concern on number six.
There's one of these in here. The, the number eleven, "The floor and walls of any room or shelter in which the animals are kept shall be covered with impervious, smooth, cleanable surfaces." shall be covered with impervious, smooth, cleanable surfaces. Does this imply that a shot crete wall, a basement wall that is concrete but shot crete, so it's porous and and not completely smooth, because this says smooth, cleanable surfaces, is somehow less usable than one that that is shot crete, even if the animals are not up against those walls? It says in here that that would be a problem and a concern.
Says, okay.
And I don't understand how that would be applicable. Um, and then my my last one uh is the business kennel section. And we have three and a half pages of business kennel section. And I'm just going to ask, has anyone applied for a business kennel recently that would prompt us to add three and a half pages of legislation to our books?
Well, uh, recently, uh, uh, would the this business kennel would apply to shop in the in industry park?
That clinic, no, this would be uh separate from a licensed veterinary clinic.
Okay, so I don't know if we've had any business kennels, but again, this this, we're doing a comprehensive, what I would call a comprehensive rewrite of this animal ordinance. Part of rewriting this animal ordinance has included some consultation with our city attorney in terms of what is included in animal ordinances. And uh while I don't know if the business kennel part came from him, it's possible that that's why we, I mean, we don't want to re, we don't rewrite ordinances all the time. And this is a comprehensive rewrite of the animal ordinance. Uh, we'll probably be taking up other ordinances and doing comprehensive rewrites. So I suspect that at this point in time, it became evident that we talked about private kennels, but we didn't talk about business kennels, and so that's leads to its inclusion.
I'm I'm personally not looking to do a business kennel, so this part does not apply to me, but my my concern is that without any kind of study, like I said, third-party study, we're taking away a whole bunch of freedoms and we have to be careful that we're not taking away freedoms and and without having some benefactor of those freedoms. Someone has to benefit for us to have these laws, otherwise it's it's not good for anyone. Um, I am a little disappointed, you mentioned that um this has been going through um a number of councils.
Plan commission.
Planning commission, sorry. Um, and being the only one who's actually applied for a kennel license in a long time, uh, I guess I was a little surprised that I wasn't maybe the first person called, um, being that it would potentially impact me um on this uh particular situation. Um, and I would also encourage not to move forward on anything until, A, we know um if this is gonna be grandfathered in, and B, until a a study has been done showing that these things are of value to our community.
So I think I'll speak to the third-party study, cause I know you've mentioned that a couple of times, and I guess so, obviously, being here a month, I'm kind of the outsider of this and trying to figure everything out, but when you mention a third-party study, what that would entail would probably be contracting with a consulting firm, like specifically the group that hired me, which was PAA, those are the groups that do that. And I'm gonna tell you right now, what that third-party study is, is exactly what the planning commission did. Is what those organizations do is they essentially pan out all of the ordinances that are done and they actually go through the organization that I'm involved in, which is the WCMA. And they'll literally put on information boards, whether it's the WCMA or the ICMA, and they'll ask, hey, we are looking into an update of our animal ordinance. Can you provide me every municipality that has the same population, or at least was in a range of populations, give me your ordinances? Then what they do is they literally go to a planning commission and they show, here's every single ordinance. So that's more than likely, I'm taking a guess, cause I wasn't here. That's probably where this business kennel information came from, is they looked at it in conversation with our attorney. Our attorney looks at that as well and looks at what other municipalities are doing. More than likely, business kennels are becoming more popular in places and they're trying to figure it out, so that's what stems of being put into an ordinance. So, that is what the third-party investigation would be, it's literally, you bring in every ordinance you can find in the state of Wisconsin that has anybody between a population usually, so we're roughly almost thirteen thousand. They go from seventy-five hundred all the way to twenty-five thousand. And they look at all those municipalities and see what their ordinance is, and they bring that to the planning commission. And the planning commission has the ability to kind of pick and choose and say, we like this portion, we don't like that portion, kind of like how Barb indicated, and one municipality may have four, one municipality may have twenty. So it's kind of narrowing it down to what they feel makes the most sense, and that's why it's here, because now it gives the opportunity for this, for you that has a concerns as a business owner to come in and say, this is gonna completely impact my business. So, I don't think there's anything, but the third-party investigation, I would argue, has been done. It's now just looking at specifically, now it's the question of, okay, if this is what we're going with, how does it impact the community? And you're doing the right thing by coming here tonight and explaining, well, if it's this, it's that, if this impacts it, those are the things we kind of need to figure out. But that typically is what a third-party investigation, that's pretty much what it is, just to kind of give you that insight.
From from my perspective, that would be a very disappointing third-party study, because that's essentially saying, well, all the other communities are jumping off a bridge, let's go jump off a bridge. But maybe jumping off the bridge isn't right, i- isn't the right thing for our community. Maybe we should look at our community and say, here's what our community is doing, and here's what we think it should be doing, and and what's best for our community. Not necessarily what was best for other communities around, let's let's be our own independent thinkers.
And Dan, I believe that's what the nine members of the plan commission have been doing for the last four months.
I'm not insulting you, don't get me wrong.
No, I I I'm just saying that this has been an ongoing discussion for not at least four months, or four meetings, and maybe even six, I can't remember. But it would, and we would take sections of it, sections of it, sections of it, and it was very well discussed. Robin isn't here tonight, but Robin would agree that it has been discussed and redisussed, and that's why now we're bringing it forward. It was for information last time, it's for information this time. I don't know if we'll move it to action next time, or if it'll be moved to action later. I haven't heard from members of the council, but thank you for sharing your concerns, and Joe has no noted those and also has indicated that he's made a contact with our city attorney based on your questions. So that's the best we have to offer.
I think, I think we've heard everything, I think you should write a letter to Joe identifying everything.
I did sit down and have quite the conversation. I I, my main concern is that, you know, being grandfathered in, and if that if that goes forward, if I hear from him, you know, in a positive manner, that does solve many of the problems, but that's yet to be seen. All right, thanks.
Dan, you had a couple of questions.
Yes, I received a phone call this afternoon. Uh, first question uh from this person, the fostering of animals for humane, for the humane society. What is required as far as license or kennel requirements? So, is there something mentioned about fostering? If you could find that for the, if you know that right now, or for the next meeting?
So, the person who called wants to be a foster animal keeper, or is a foster?
Possibility.
Possibility. And so the question is, do we have anything addressing being a foster parent?
Right.
Good question. Don't know that that ever came up.
Next question. What about wolf-dog hybrids? Are they covered in this ordinance or not? There are some people that breed and have wolf-dog hybrids. So, is there anything in in the ordinance?
Uh, there is regarding wolves, regarding hybrids, no, it's not addressed.
Okay.
And this person would like to see something addressed about wolf-dog hybrids?
Yes, yes.
They just were curious if it was addressed?
This person knows about wolf-dog hybrids and wants to know whether or not the city of Platteville addresses that particular issue of wolf-dog hybrids.
Is that particular person willing to talk to Joe about what their idea and or concern would be?
Well, I suppose, but um I'd have to ask the person.
Well, could you please ask the person so that Joe knows what he's supposed to be investigating exactly?
Well, the licensing or any regulations of wolf-dog hybrids? That's the question.
Other questions of councilmen? Isaac, nothing? Barb?
Well, this gentleman had one question, and that would be, his main question was, will he be grandfathered in?
Well, and we're getting, we're we're getting that information, that's.
That would be my number one question, and I would like to hear an answer. Because grandfathering is, and as we all know, can be a slippery slope, so.
Okay.
That's what's going to the city attorney, right?
It's already, the question is already at the city attorney. Yep, it's just that we haven't heard back from the city attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, other than that, I think then uh we will uh likely keep this on for information, Adam, for the next meeting, not move it to action, yep. All right. Moving on to our next discussion item, this is a ward of contract ten twenty, lot four, Oak Street Parking Lot Reconstruction.
Yes, um, lot number four is the publicly owned parking lot at the corner of Oak and Main. We have twenty-one stalls in this lot, eleven stalls along the west side are used for reserved parking. There's one handicap parking stall and nine other stalls on the east side of the lot. Those stalls are three-hour parking, nine AM to five-thirty PM, and no parking, three to six AM. Uh, lot four is in poor condition, large dips in the pavement, uh, and that was uh budgeted for reconstruction for this year. We conducted a bid opening, there were six bidders, low bidder is Rural Excavating with a bid of fifty thousand, six twelve fifty. And uh we budgeted uh sixteen thousand in engineering costs, sev- fifty-seven thousand for construction costs, so it is within the budget. And so I will be recommending that we award the contract to Rural Excavating at that price.
So, will the engineering contract come separate, or where do we see the engineer, where do we see the total cost of this project?
It's in there, seventy-three thousand for engineering and construction.
Yes.
That was what they budgeted.
Seventy-three thousand is what's budgeted, and so we divided that up as sixteen thousand in engineering and fifty-seven for construction.
Right, and I see that the construction is fifty thousand, right?
Yes.
That's exclusive of engineering?
That's correct.
And so where do we see the engineering cost?
Um, that general, that has not come back to the council in the past, that's part of the overall um engineering contracts that we've had with Delta Three. This is the allocation for the lot four.
So they get allocated sixteen thousand period?
It's based on their actual time and effort involved in in the design and and construction engineering.
We'll see it in the building.
Yes.
In the build.
Is this gonna be another asphalt parking, or are we gonna put any concrete in this one?
Um, the plan is that most of it will be in asphalt, however, we will put concrete in at the entrance area and specifically alongside of uh the one building to the north uh where they currently have those uh uh dumpsters, so that it would support the uh garbage trucks better.
The reason I ask is on the, be on the east side of the parking lot where, when the people stop, you'll notice that's where quite a few of the dips are. And it seems to be, we actually were in the building right next to there since the seventies, is every time it was redone, that particular area, the front vehicles, tires from the vehicles, when they had stopped, when it was hot out, would push the asphalt down, kind of like anytime you see a congested area like that where, you know, if we could put some little extra, maybe a base on or something right there to prohibit that.
Well, there there will be, there will be uh gravel base compacted in the whole business, and we will be looking at that to see whether or not there are other reasons why there's uh those dips in there, whether that's because of poor fa- uh poor compaction from previous um building demolition or or some other reason.
So, you specified that in the contract or proposal? As far as the depth of removal of the material, cause I looked at it the day, it's really sunk in a rock.
Yes, we we have the that specified in there, let me see what I've got. I believe the typical.
Then my next question is, if you go down that deep to get that out, how are you gonna make that so it coincides enough with the rest of the material in the lot as far as compaction? Because if you put, for example, if you put a lot of crushed rock in that area, and what are you gonna do with the rest of the property there, of the main, of the parking lot, to make it uniform? So that that area doesn't stand up better than the rest of the lot? I'll give you my example, what I saw out here a few years back behind Garvey Station. They were compacting that area back of Garvey's, and they were doing it with um, I guess, what do you call a backhoe? It looked like they were trying to compact a foam rubber or a sponge. They'd go over it and it kept coming back up, so it needs to be very careful supervision as far as what's done and removal, and then what's put back and how that compares to the rest of the lot.
Okay.
Cause over time, that's, I know, those things will settle differently.
Well, that that's, that's why we have the engineers working with this, but the idea here is that um our our typical cross-section for the asphalt pavement will be twelve inches of gravel and three inches of asphalt, which is essentially the same as a residential street.
But that, that, that spot, that area that's dipping, that's much more than twelve inches, that's.
If we need to, we ex. If we need to, we excavate, overexcavate that and and uh fill with compacted gravel.
As I said before, now you have that area, how's that gonna compare to the rest of it? How much in the other area is there gonna be as far as clay, clay alone? And that makes a difference. So if you wanna go down twelve inches, you could still have a problem. So that's all I have for comments.
Yeah, I would have to say that's one of our worst parking lots and needs perhaps the most attention. Um, anybody, any other questions on the Oak Street Parking Lot? Barb, Jason, Isaac? All right, then let's move on to the next item, which is the sidewalk snow removal policy. Uh, Adam and Howard?
Yeah, so um, again, uh, one of the things we wanted to bring to you guys tonight is is to just kind of kick-start a conversation about our our sidewalk snow removal policy, so um, obviously, the recent snow events Platteville experienced during the months of January and February has caused staff and both council members to receive kind of questions or concerns regarding the city's sidewalk snow removal policy. So, one of the things I really wanted to do tonight, both Howard and I, um, and even Doug, a little bit from the police standpoint, is is kind of open up this conversation to make sure everybody understands kind of what our policy is, where we're at, how we got here, and and really kind of just talk about, okay, if we do decide to make a change, what are the ramifications? And I think we just want to, myself as the manager, I just want to make sure that whatever direction we kind of look at, or what what we want to do here, is that we just all make sure we're all on the same page, so that, you know, from the person doing the enforcement, up the chain to the director, to the police, to me, and then to you guys as council members, we just all really have a firm grasp of if we feel the policy's fine, or if we feel, uh, there may be some tweaking that needs to be done. So, um, the met, the kind of summary sheet here just kind of summarizes everything going on, so basically, when there's a single snow event of two inches or more, or successive snow events with a cumulative snow depth of two inches or more, the city enforces Municipal Code four point zero nine, found as an attachment to the summary sheet. Um, in that ordinance, the Director of Public Works is charged with enforcement of the ordinance. It's been a longstanding policy, if another snow event takes place within the enforcement window, enforcement action stops and restarts at the end of any subsequent event. Uh, the Director of Public Works also uses discretion based on weather forecasts. If a snow event is predicted within a short time of an enforcement action, he will con- consult with city personnel and decide whether to begin or postpone enforcement action. So, what I did is I sat down with um with Howard and also with Doug, and kind of went over what is our policy, and that's kind of what I outlined in for you guys here in this summary. So currently, the following actions are taken after the stoppage of a snow event. Um, no earlier than twenty-four hours after the snow event is terminated, the part-time code enforcement office. the part-time code enforcement officer checks sidewalks in the city for compliance with the above municipal code. I think Barb, you had asked some questions on kinda, what does that mean? When do they start? I don't know, Howard, do you wanna kinda pipe in on that, since you met with the code enforcement officer, and kinda go through what specifically that person does?
Sure. Okay. One of the questions was, how, how do the sidewalks get checked? What happens is, it'll, it'll depend a little bit. If the snowbanks are low enough so that the person in the truck can, can actually see the sidewalks, and if traffic is light, what will generally happen is the code enforcement officer will drive slowly down the street and look at the sidewalks over the low snowbanks and see whether or not they're shoveled. If they are, keep going. If they're not, then they pull over and start their enforcement action. If the snowbanks are not low enough where you can effectively see the snowbanks, then they have to stop, get out, and actually walk the streets. Or if the traffic is heavy enough where you would block traffic by going so slow down the street, they basically just pull over, park, and, and do that. One of the other issues was, do they start in the same place all the time? Or vary where the, where the checks happen? The code enforcement officer has multiple duties, not just snow enforcement. Also has building inspection duties and, and other duties as assigned by the police department. So when the code enforcement officer goes out, most of the time, this person is doing other tasks. So what will end up happening is they'll go out, and if they're doing an inspection on Second Street for other code enforcement for the building inspector, or doing something on Division Street for, for the police department, when they're done with that, then they'll start at that location and do the sidewalks. So it does generally vary. Now, for this year, we had the snow event, snow shovelings from January sixteenth and seventeenth. There were twenty-one sidewalks shoveled, twenty-first and twenty-second, twenty-three sidewalks were shoveled. And January thirtieth, ten sidewalks were shoveled. I've not received the invoices yet for any enforcement actions in February. So.
Are all sidewalks in the city checked every snowfall?
Yes.
So all sidewalks are checked?
Yes.
Miles of sidewalk do we have?
Not sure. I think it's around forty or so.
All are checked every time?
We need to, we need to, I need to couch that because one of the other things that the council did a number of years ago was said that they wanted it to be a policy that any subdivision that had less than fifty percent of the lots sold, any sidewalks in those subdivisions would not have this, this ordinance enforced. So particularly, the Keystone subdivision behind Walmart and Menards has less than fifty percent. And so I, I, I had to take back my earlier thing. I don't believe that those sidewalks are ever looked at because of the other policy statement by the council.
And I believe I asked for a copy of the door hanger.
Yep. And so that's in the, in the packet. So I'm gonna get to that. We're getting there. So that kinda answered some of the, I think, the main questions. So kinda going back to, as we go through the process. So basically, no earlier than twenty-four hours, the code enforcement officer is basically sent out to check the sidewalks. So any sidewalks not in compliance are still not technically in violation, as typically if they go out twenty-four hours, thirty-six is what our ordinance says. But as a courtesy, the, the code enforcement officer provides a door hanger, advising the resident of the fact that the sidewalk has not been cleared and it will be rechecked after twenty-four hours. That door hanger should be the fourth, one, two, three, fourth page in, is a copy of what the friendly reminder that goes out. So as you can see, basically, the court, the code enforcement officer puts in there, as of the date and then the time, your sidewalk has not been cleared. If the sidewalk remains unclear after, they put again, twenty-four hours and the time, that's essentially when the contractor will be called to enforce that particular property. So what happens is that door hanger essentially goes on there, twenty-four hours passes, the code enforcement officer goes back out and basically checks all of those properties that they have marked. If they, if the sidewalk is not cleared, the officer then documents the address, takes date and time stamps before conditioned photos, and notifies the city contractor. Under our current contract, the contractor is required to clear the sidewalk within twenty-four hours of notification. Once the sidewalk is cleared, the contractor then takes date and timestamp after conditioned photos and then sends them to the code enforcement officer for kinda her documentation. Currently, if the contractor arrives to clear a location after receiving information from the officer and the sidewalk has been successfully cleared, the property owner is still billed for the service. The contractor has five days to provide the photos and invoices for the snow remove to the city. The CEO then verifies again all the information that comes in and gives that information to our public works. And then they forward that on to finance, and then finance basically pays the contractor and bills the owner identified on the spreadsheet. So just to kinda give some past history, so pack, past practice was such that no sooner than thirty-six hours after the end of a snow event of any accumulation, the Director of Public Works would direct the contractor to begin enforcement. So essentially, at one point in time, we didn't have a code enforcement officer doing it. It was more thirty-six hours. We essentially gave it to the contractor. The contractor went out and did the before and afters. What happened there is there wasn't really a courtesy warning that was given at that point in time. It was just, here's what our ordinance says, clock ticks, boom, done. My understanding is, in talking kinda with past history, that caused, you know, some complaints to be given by citizens, which then caused us to kinda create this courtesy window or kinda, you know, more opportunity to correct the issue before you got kinda the final, you know, slam of the, you know, gavel that, okay, we're coming. The council then also passed ordinance zero zero dash twenty-seven on September twenty-six, which essentially changed the time to shovel sidewalks from twenty-four to thirty-six hours. The texts in our current ordinance pretty much stayed the same. So then what I did is just kinda talked to a couple of my peers and looked at a couple of sample ordinances that I found. And what I found is they kinda, again, just in our previous conversation with the animals, they run the gamut. You know, the, some of them are twenty-four hours, some of them, in talking, after putting this together, larger municipalities have the same thing. They have thirty-six, or they have forty-eight. So that just kinda gives you guys some context into what other municipalities are doing. So as I kinda said, you know, this, this situation, it's, it's complicated for staff and council members as the ordinance and discussion kinda threads on that balance. It, it's the safety balance where, again, we wanna make sure that people are on strollers, people who are walking, people in wheelchairs have that accessibility. But also then it threads on that conversation of, again, you don't wanna be known as a municipality where all you're doing is revenue grabbing, which isn't the case. But that's the, you know, conversation that can get kickstarted with this. So again, at the time of discussion, you know, any budget or fiscal impacts are hard to determine because that kinda depends on what direction we wanna go. If we go to more of a, you know, enforcement end where we don't so much do the courtesy window, that obviously could increase some costs because obviously the contractor's going out and doing more work. There's also the question of, you know, is there any legal issues with complaints that come up? Who knows? You know, that's kinda one of the things to consider. So what city staff is kinda looking for is further discussion from the common council regarding the following. You know, do we look at staying with the current ordinance and policy procedures? Do we amend the current ordinance and look at going back to a twenty-four hour enforcement window? Do we go back to what we had before, where we keep the thirty-six, but maybe tweak the enforcement? So those are, those are all kinda the things that are up, up for discussion tonight that we're, we're kinda looking to kinda wrap our heads around.
Going back to the first sentence, what are the questions coming from the people? What are the concerns? What are the complaints as far as the policy?
Some of the concerns we've heard, and Howard maybe can address this a little bit more, but, you know, one of the concerns I know that has been brought up has been the question of, we give the, basically, we put the flyer on the door, code enforcement officer goes and checks it, says nope, they send the person out, and it's already been done. And then they receive a bill. I think we've had one complaint about that so far that's kinda come up, so that's been a conversation. I think Howard handles the majority of the complaints, so I'll let him kinda take it from there.
Part of this is a perception of, of, of differing enforcement because of weather conditions, because of weekends, because of other things. You know, if we get a, if we get a snow event on Thursday evening, for example, and our twenty-four hours where the code enforcement officer would go out happens to be a Friday evening, well, because this person doesn't work on the weekend, it doesn't, the code enforcement doesn't happen effectively until Monday. Versus, say, an event on a Tuesday where the code enforcement person can go out on Wednesday. You know, those are, those are some of the questions or concerns that are going on. Others are, you know, my interpretation of the weather forecast. We see just today, you know, here in the last twenty-four hours, how weather forecasts can and do change. But I look at it, you know, when the code enforcement officer goes out after, you know, looking at the future, the snow event stops, it takes twenty-four hours before the code enforcement officer goes out, and then another twenty-four hours before the, before it's rechecked. If there's a, if there's a snow forecast, you know, seventy-two hours out, do we act, do we send out the, the contractor in this one-day time window to do this? Or do we wait until that other snowfall happens? In many cases, I make the decision that we defer enforcement of that because of the weather forecasts. And so that brings up the question whether staff is enforcing the policy equally. Well, we're trying to balance that with the weather. And, you know, does it make sense for the contractor to, to shovel, you know, ten properties when there were twenty on the list? Because after the tenth property, it started snowing. It's a judgment call.
Barb, do you have questions on this? Of staff? Snow removal pol, anything? Cause I have a couple people wanna speak, but before I do that, I wanna make sure that we have council.
I hire somebody so that within ten minutes before I leave in the morning, that sidewalk of mine is cleared for the very fact I sit at this council. But that's my personal preference. I also happen to be on the street where there's a lot of foot traffic. And if I don't clear right away, it's all packed down. So it's a, it's a problem. I don't know what you are all gonna be doing. But I remember when we switched from twenty-four to thirty-six. I drive through this town, and I go past a lot of student housing, and students don't have time to go out there and shovel until it's nine o'clock at night. And then it's packed down. So, and then our policy says grass to grass. Well, that's difficult at nine o'clock at night to do grass to grass. But I think the conversation's good. I think we need to converse.
Any questions on?
One question is, in, in the event of where it snows, there's a block of time in between, but then there's a forecast for another snow. I know it's not always exact science, but is there like a limit in terms of how you make the call? Like, how much time has to be in between each event? Does that make sense? Like, in terms of, like, is it okay to wait like forty-eight hours if you, if there's another forecasted snow before you send out the contractor type thing?
It's a judgment call that I, I look at. What I try to do is I try to, try to put myself not only in the shoes of the person walking on the sidewalk, but also in the shoes of the property owner. Does it make sense to, to have that get enforced now? Knowing that it's going to, you know, anticipating that it's going to snow in the next six, twelve hours? You know, when, when it starts getting twenty-four, forty-eight hours from when the contractor can enforce it to the time of a snowfall, then, then I probably send out the, the contractor for enforcement. But, you know, if we're talking twelve to twenty-four hours, probably not.
Isaac?
I've got a few concerns. And I just think one thing we give is we give too much time here. The time we do the thirty-six hours, if the code enforcement person goes out right away, which probably doesn't happen, some people can get twenty-four hours just from there. And then they get another twenty-four hour, we'll say, waiver, waiting for that time period to shovel it. You could have up to four days right now. This last event, a couple of, on the email and the pictures I sent you, not including a house that was missed, which is understandable. These people had twelve days to do their sidewalks, and they weren't done. And a lot of times, it's the same house over and over. So they're, they're aware of the policy and the fact that if we have an ordinance, firstly, I don't think we need to go out and spend the time and the effort to do a door hanger as a convenience. I mean, you already have an ordinance. So thirty-six hours after that, I feel that the contractor should be out there removing the snow. I think if we trust the contractor enough to do the work before and after pictures, they should be able to make the call, go down the street, say, yep, this one needs to be done, this one doesn't need to be done. Eliminating the code enforcement person, which again eliminates another time, same person. That person can be doing other duties that they have instead of just the snow removal. I think we've complicated this ordinance to the point where, you know, it's this or it's that, instead of just going back to the basic rules of what the ordinance states of removing the snow. I've made quite a few calls around other communities in the area, Dodgeville, Lancaster, Prairie Sheen, all them. I couldn't find another community that does the door hangers or convenience. They just, after twenty-four hours, they either themselves, the community, or the contractor that they have hired for the year, remove the snow, and then they bill the property owner accordingly.
I have two people who have asked to speak. So Ben, you wanna give us your analysis from a student perspective?
All right, so when I wrote this out, it was between the thirty-six hours and the twenty-four hours, cause that's what I, what I read within the packet. So what I mainly put is areas of support, obviously. As Barb mentioned, that obviously, a lot of those sidewalks get packed down really, really, well, really get packed down, especially at Roundtree, you know, that hill above Roundtree. Even if it's like five minutes after the snowfall, that gets packed down where it's almost like concrete on the, on the actual concrete. So areas of support obviously would be, changing to a twenty-four hours would, would benefit students in the fact that when they're trans, when they're going in between classes, the, the actual transportation, walking between classes, businesses, things like that. Twenty-four hours makes it obviously clean up the roads, things like that. Also, compliance with people within wheelchairs, scooters, crutches, anything like that. Obviously, we have a lot of athletes on campus. So at any point in time, any one of them could end up in a wheelchair or crutches for, for a certain amount of time. Obviously, having snow and ice that you have to trek through is, is difficult enough, let alone if you're in one of those. And then obviously, the areas of concerns, as also mentioned by Barb, students have busy schedules. I know for myself, I start out probably at six AM, and I don't get back to my dorm some nights until ten A, ten PM. And even then, I still have homework and things like that. So the busyness of the schedule, obviously from students. Also, if a change happens, I mean, if it's not properly communicated to both the, the tenants of the, of the property and the landlords, that might cause for confusion since it's changed so much. And then, and then like I mentioned, you know, a decrease from thirty-six hours- And then, and then like I mentioned, you know, a decrease from 36 hours to 24 hours among students might, if they keep on getting bills, might, they, they'll probably come with ideally, you know, the stigma, the, the city's just looking for extra money or things like that. But those are my, my biggest support and concerns. Thank you.
Kurt, Timlin.
I was just going to mention that one of the reasons why, back in 2000, we went from 24 to 36 was there were a number of people who were concerned that 24 hours wasn't enough time to get sidewalks shoveled because of student schedules, but also from other people who work multiple shifts and, and other things. So that's, that was one of the reasons why the council extended it to 36 hours.
Good evening. Kurt Timlin, Southwest Lawn Care, current city contractor. Was also the city contractor last year. This program is continually tweaked. I think Howard would agree with that. It got tweaked this year from last year. It's, I would say, better this year than last year. But there's still things we can all work together and accomplish, I think, to make it even better. The hour thing, the 24 to 36, really probably not going to make a difference a lot of times, but sometimes it would. We had one instance so far this winter where we went four different snowstorms before we got to go out and clear. Because right about the time we'd be ready, all of a sudden it would start snowing again. The problem we have is it's weather, it's mother nature. And no matter how Howard tries to manage it, or I try to manage it, or the meteorologists try to manage it, we're going to lose, we're going to be wrong. I mean, it's, that's a fact of life. So that part of it isn't as huge of a thing because we're never going to figure out mother nature perfectly, and that's just what it is. The, the thing that I think we could do to potentially improve is the, the before and after photo thing. We changed how we did it this year and it's helped. But what we could do is, what we do a lot of times, we'll look at stuff, we'll go down to the end of a block and I can stand at the end of that block, park safely, and I can look. And when I see a white spot or ice, I just then go note that address. We can do that a lot quicker than we can go down and try to look over snowbanks, driving slowly or holding up traffic or whatever. And there's no reason why, whether it's us doing the work or another contractor, why the contractor can't be trusted to make those notations. Even if you still want to do a door hanger, which I don't personally think is necessary, but if that's what the city council thought was necessary, then you could still have the contractor do that, and they could be doing all this process at once. Now, they have the list, and as long as they document correctly, which is what the community officer is now currently doing, and then we follow up with the after photos, and they're all time to date stamped. Hers are time to date stamped, so everything has to line up anyway. We could be doing all those same processes and then giving Doug's officer time to do other stuff as well. Now, that officer could still be our contact, like it currently is, but it would save that officer a lot of legwork and a lot of time. And there's probably other things, I would assume, that he could still have that officer doing. What happens right now is our two work schedules don't line up equally either because I'm assuming that the city only gives Doug enough money to have that officer part-time. Well, we'd work full-time and mother nature works more than full-time, obviously. So consequently, a lot of times, those hours don't align, which is through no one's fault, but it's just through the way that the resources are currently utilized, obviously. So we could improve that because now, if we go out at a normal city start time, say it's 7:00 AM, and I think that's a reasonable time, you know, I don't think a citizen can complain, hey, they were out here too early or anything. But if we went out at a reasonable time, and then whether we did door hangers or not, but we inspect, and now all of a sudden, once we inspect it and we say, okay, if we're doing a door hanger, then we aren't going to be back for 24, but if we didn't do a door hanger, we got to document with our photos. And then what ends up happening now, realistically, is the majority of snowfalls, because of the way the timing is and the way they fall, it doesn't happen as much during Christmas break because there's not the students and the foot traffic that we would normally have. But during the students' time in school, it's foot traffic, everything's ends up being hard pack. And our hard pack rate is almost double what it is to just shovel fluff snow. Consequently, it ends up costing a lot more money for everybody that we aren't going to be able to change. The other thing that hard pack comes into play this time of year because we go through constant freeze thaw cycles. So the longer that window is out, the harder it gets to clear, obviously. Or if we go through a period where we had four more snowfalls, the stuff underneath might be just warm enough that it started melting. Or if, let's say, the half the sidewalk got cleared, half the width of it, that sidewalk this time of year with the sun out warms up pretty good. What does that do? It melts the stuff on the edges that they didn't clear. It melts that quicker because it's warm now, and that refreezes, now that's all hard pack. So those are some of the challenges. And like I say, it's, it's improved drastically, I believe, in one year's time, but we can still take it forward with potential changes.
So Kurt, your suggestion was that perhaps you be authorized to be the code enforcement officer? And if we continue the door hangers, that since you, your, your business operates basically 24/7, 365, well, not hopefully for snow, 24/7, shorten that 365, that then if the snow event stopped at four o'clock on Friday, you would be inspecting by four o'clock on Saturday? And removal would start by Monday, rather than, at this point, the code enforcement officer doesn't start until Monday, so then it's Tuesday and then it's Wednesday, so now we're basically at a week.
Right, or maybe, maybe like I say, maybe their part-time schedule only aligns. I don't know this for sure, but, I mean, Doug could answer, but if we have a part-time person, I assume, and typically they're college students, so their schedule can vary based on their college schedule, obviously, which is understandable. So what I'm saying is, not just us, but any contractor you hire, if you said, here's the requirements of it and here's what we're going to have you do, whether it's a door hanger or not, and then we can expedite the process. The, the other saving grace years ago to the 36 hour thing was, if somebody left town for the weekend, odds are they make it back within the window and then don't get tagged. The other thing that may or may not be of consideration would be, and Howard knows this, we see a lot of them that do get partially done. We see a fair amount of them. And if we see a fair amount that are partially done, maybe the priority is the ones that haven't been touched at all. So that's how, in essence, we established, for lack of better terms, a pecking order. And maybe the pecking order is, if you haven't done anything, we got to get something cleared right away. And we still clear it grass to grass, but now as we work down, if we didn't hit something, at least part of that sidewalk was cleared. You know, which part is better than nothing, but it's still not to code. And that might help, too. The, we've had two other instances where the one time, the one time it was 16 properties that we turned in a list for that we knew were bad as we see other properties that were doing them, and we didn't get to them because it started snow, you know, it started snowing again. So we gave the list to Crystal, but then it started snowing again, so Crystal didn't have time to put those properties out there. I mean, it's, it's nobody's fault, it's just the way it worked with mother nature. But we've had that kind of an instance two times now. And the other time, it was 40 properties, and of those, about five of them were on the list that she gave us. So there was 35 others that we didn't get to at all. So that can be-
Because it started to snow.
Because, right, because another event started happening. So that can be part of the problem, like Howard was saying, that some people would say, well, you're not being fair because I got hit twice and I know this one over here didn't get hit at all. Which, then that can lead to that, obviously. So that's kind of where it's at.
This was a change in policy this year.
Correct.
The, the change in policy with the door hanger and stuff.
Right.
It's instituted because our, our original bid came back and it was $600 flat fee.
Correct.
Before anything else happened. And our snow removal policy, the cost of snow removal is paid by the people whose sidewalks are cleared, I guess is how I would say. It's a cost recovery program.
Right.
Where, you know, we do a little administrative fee, but basically it's a cost recovery program. So I know at that time, the council felt there was no way to come up with the 600 extra dollars. And so this door hanger policy was instituted. So we've heard a lot of things. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
We obviously aren't here to change anything tonight, and I understand that. I'm just throwing this information out here. And if in the future, you want me to come back, I can. And once again, I realize that next year it goes out for bid again. It may not be us next year, but these are just things that in the two years we've noticed, and like I say, we can all work together and probably come up with something decent, you know, so. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Otherwise, Adam, I think we probably won't, there won't be any action on this next time. So perhaps we could do some exploration. As far as the door hanger goes, it, to me, there is one thing missing on it.
Sure.
And that is, at the end of the sentence, second sentence, that says, if you, you know, we'll be back on this day and this time, and we're going to clear your, and your sidewalk will be cleared and you will be charged, it should say regardless of whether you have already cleared it.
I would agree.
Right. I mean, we're char, when, when we give property notice to Kurt, if, if we give him 10 properties and he goes and five of them are cleared, I'm sorry. They've been noticed, they've gotten a second notice, even though he may not have had to do any work, they still get charged.
They get charged, our minimum charge was, this year, the minimum charge is $48 for coming by. But it'd be a lot more than that if we hadn't cleared it.
Right. But I mean, they get charged, and I, I mean.
Yep, I would agree.
So we should put that. So anything else on this policy? I do have another question, and that is, do we have a form online? I mean, I walk, and I can tell you that there are two sidewalks that I have yet to see shoveled on the path that I walk.
There's, there's no form for that, but an email or a phone call is sufficient with, with a property address. I don't, even in the past, we would just accept it as a phone call. We would not take anyone's name so that under, under open records, if I do not officially record somebody's name as complaining, that, that's not discoverable. So if a person wants to complain that the sidewalk at such and such an address has not been done, they do not need to leave their name.
Were you able to find any municipalities that had, did door hangers or courtesy call or something?
Did, did, do I know of any that do it? Yeah, there, so the previous one I was at did that. They had a 24-hour policy and then they would go and do a door hanger. I talked with one of my kind of cohorts, another in Oak Creek. They do a very similar process where they do, they do do a door hanger. So it just, it varies. There's some that do and there's some that don't.
I, I think that's how we got the door hanger policy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Another community that we. All right, so I think we've fortunately not had snow tonight to deal with, so we can move on to the next thing, which is a RFP, a Fire Department Comprehensive Analysis. Adam?
Yeah, so this again is to kind of kickstart the conversation. So obviously, talking with various staff, committee and council members and members of the public, the con, the concept of a new or renovated fire station has kind of been an ongoing discussion. If you guys remember, at the January 28th, 2020 council meeting, the 2020 city goals were officially adopted. And within those goals, under the heading of infrastructure, is the development of a fire station comprehensive and conceptual plan. So within the 2020 adopted budget, there's a capital line item that was created for $75,000 to be utilized towards the creation of a fire station comprehensive and conceptual design plan. The funds were to be dispersed with about $20,000 to $25,000 being allocated from the city and $50,000 to $55,000 coming from other revenue sources. Administrator, Administration Director Maurer and myself met on January 7th, 2020 with Bill Kloster, who haze in the audience, hi, Bill. And Deb Rice, who are members of an organization group assisting in procuring the remaining $50,000 for the study to be completed. During our discussion, they indicated they felt confident they had a commitment from members to meet the funding requirement. So working with Fire Chief Simmons, I reached out to my Wisconsin City Manager Association contacts and found municipalities have contracted with the following firms to conduct such a study. There's Dr. Tim McGrath with McGrath Consulting Group Incorporated, and I gave you guys the website there. There's also Jeff Romer with RW Management Group. I did reach out to both reps, both individuals of the firms, and they indicated they have conducted studies like the one the city would be looking for and expressed interest in responding to a formal RFP. Also, Mike Jansen has been working kind of with Bill and Deb, and I think the group in regards to kind of some engineering studies and also this. He has reached out to me as well and I've talked with him. There are another organization, there's a firm that they're aware of is RDG that also does these type of RFP responses that potentially would be interested in as well. So what I did, just to kind of kickstart this conversation, is put together a sample RFP based on kind of research from other municipalities. I drafted the version that's attached to this summary, summary sheet. So what I did is essentially, there's, the RFP that you see in here has a scope of service that really indicates kind of one through eight items. So there's future service delivery, operational alternatives, right size, operating costs, location, fire station conversion, garage space and shared facilities. So items one through four are really designed for the consultant to review and express to the city the current means by which services provided by your fire department and project what the future entails for the delivery service. So in a nutshell, one through four is your 50,000-foot level of, let's plan out 50 years down the road, what is a fire station, you know, what does our department look like? Is it volunteer? Is it a combination of paid on call? Is it full-time? What could it be? Having them kind of analyze that, looking at, you know, some of the trends of, what type of equipment are they going to be using in 50 years? What are the trends showing? Is it a regional fire department? Those type of things. And then five through eight really is designed more for the consultant to review and express to the city the best and ideal location for a future fire station. Is it in its current place that it is now with some type of expansion? Or is it looking at a future campus setting somewhere else? Kind of looking at the gamut of combinations of, is it just a fire station? Is it a fire station training center? And some type of, you know, residential or commercial component attached to it? You know, there's been talk about, you know, could a restaurant be associated with it? That later down the road, I'll tell you about some interesting stuff there. We might be able to do Southwest Tech. Just kind of kicking around any ideas, you know, from the most, you know, small to the Taj Mahal, whatever the heck we're looking for, those kind of concepts. So currently, the draft RFP would require a consultant to attend two public meetings in order to make a presentation regarding the draft and final report to the common council. Additional meetings, whether in person or otherwise, to be coordinated by staff and committees as needed. Further discussion regarding what staff members committees would comprise additional meetings would have to occur. I think also in kind of the kickstart of this conversation, one of the things obviously that we need to do is more than likely have some conversation with the fire district itself. So I think that's something where, you know, I'm not sure how we want to go to tackle about that, if it's a meeting, but really, I just kind of wanted to get you guys in front of you. So, you know, mainly the purpose of this tonight is for information. I really want you guys to kind of review this RFP. Again, this is my kind of one month of looking at everybody, meeting with everybody and just putting something so that we have a draft to move forward with. So what I really want you guys to do is, you know, do the due diligence of looking into this document, see if there's things you like, see if there's things you don't like. You're not going to hurt my feelings. The purpose of this, again, is just to really kind of kickstart this conversation. You know, from a budgeting fiscal impact, that's really going to be hard to say. What the RFP does is, you know, the whole full plan with this is it's going to give us the ability to have a consultant give us a bid for one through eight, or give us, you know, simultaneous bids of one through four. If we just want to look at, you know, start with the high, you know, pie in the sky analysis, or if we can see what it would be to have somebody come in and kind of give us those conceptual drawings. So I think we'll get a little further information there. You know, the other thing with the fiscal contact is, depends on who's involved. So if we're talking with Southwest Tech, maybe there's some additional funding that they would provide. The university's another scenario, the towns that are involved in the fire district. That's all things that we'll have to kind of, you know, consider when we go down the budget fiscal end of things. So really, again, you know, the recommendation that I'm just giving you tonight is to give you a copy of this RSP as a starting template, ask you to review it. You know, once we have enough feedback and we all kind of feel we're following the right steps that we need to go, you know, obviously, there's going to be conversations with Bill and the organization that they're working with to kind of make sure everything's going together. um, you know, obviously, there's gonna be conversations with Bill and the organization that they're working with to kinda make sure everything's going together. Um, but, you know, since this was one of the goals we kinda to roll out here in twenty twenty, here it is.
Any questions, um, Adam, from the council? And, uh, you'll be running this draft by the members of the fire department?
Yes, correct, so.
And the member communities of the fire district, and then our big collaborative partners in town.
Yeah, so my, my, yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
The university and, uh, Southwest Health.
Yeah, so the, the plan was kinda to get it to, in front of you guys tonight, I think obviously, like we said, this'll be one of those items that'll continually come up as a discussion item on our agendas, where you can kinda give me feedback on, there's things that you can tweak. And I think once we feel as a city, it's kinda to the point where we want it to go, uh, my intention is, as we continue these meetings, I've got a meeting scheduled, I think, in March? No, yeah, March, I think, coming up, where I'm actually gonna meet with the fire department itself and the members, and kinda show them this. I've met a couple of times with Bill, they kinda have a, they got a, kind of a rough, rough version of this, but I think it would be prudent to have another meeting with them to kinda talk about that, and then based on the feedback I kinda hear from you guys, and obviously with the fire department, I think that then would kick the next step conversations of starting to go to some of these, you know, the to, the fire district itself, and then also, you know, some of the partners that would make sense. Um, and kinda, you know, really start finiting this in, so that we all agree on an RFP, and again, we wanna make sure all of our collaborative partners are on the same page before we start sending this out to get truly those quotes.
Questions here, anybody?
No, but if I recall right, when we were talking with the consulting firm to, uh, find Adam for the new city manager's job, um, they had mentioned that the UW Madison campus has a program, it was in the master's program, um, that does something on this line of doing these studies and surveys.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't recall exactly what it was, but, uh, it was a master's program. Um, students did it obviously with their advisors and professors, but it was a way of saving municipalities a bunch of money.
Yes, so there is, um, and maybe this was it, it's called the Uni, 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 what is it, University City Alliance? That they do, it's a program that we did, in the previous place I was at, they're actually doing the same thing for a municipal building study. Um, so I could look into that, but I could also talk with, I know Kevin, I can reach out to Kevin and see if he knows specifically the group that-
That alliance does sound, sound about right.
Yeah, I know, there's a couple of different things that, and yeah, I think that would be a perfect conversation, because yeah, it's a great way to, you know, the more the merrier.
Um, I have one person, Bill, William Kloster, who, uh, doesn't say he wants to speak, he wants to register in favor of a fire department analysis. Is that it, Bill? You don't wanna speak? Okay. Alright, so if you have, um, ideas to add to this RFP as you read through it, please get those ideas to Adam. We'll have this on the agenda, information agenda, with any changes-
Yep.
The next couple of times, I guess, and then we'll-
Yeah, if you guys-
Hope to see where we end up by the end of March.
Yeah, cause then I'd like to kinda have a-
Not with the fire department.
Yep, and all of their concerns, and then I can kinda, if nobody sees anything that thinks needs to be added, that'll kinda give me the green light to kinda move it further down the road and keep pushing it.
Alright, uh, we'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the resolution to terminate tax increment financing district number four, Nicola, and I'm the one wrench at you the last time.
Was a good one.
As it turned out.
Yes, so, um, TID four is coming to its end of life, it was extended by one year for, um, for the affordable housing program, which allowed this, uh, city to use uh, one more year of tax increment to fund, uh, an affordable housing program or programs. The question came up, uh, last time as to some legislation that's currently being considered by the state, um, which may allow the affordable housing extension to be more than one year, up to three years. So I said that I would bring an update to the council on, um, where things were at, at the state level. The assembly did pass a bill, AB eight fifty-nine, um, which was sent to the senate, um, and the senate is uh, considering its own bill, uh, there was a public hearing that was held on February the nineteenth. The, the legislation, um, that is being considered right now does, uh, change some of the language. Um, the timeframe also is that the senate will have a floor session on March the twenty-fourth through March the twenty-sixth. But any bill coming out of that floor session would not be sent to the governor until April the sixteenth. The deadline that we have to comply with for terminating the TID is April the fifteenth. So there's- There are, uh, it seems at this point that we don't have an option to wait to see what kind of legislation might be passed, if any, um, and signed by the governor. Uh, even if we were able to do that, it may not, the, the language may change in a way that makes it a program that would not fit with the city. Um, so, uh, it seems that the best thing to do would be to bring this back for action to terminate the TID.
Back for action on March eleventh?
Yes.
Okay. Snowball, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it never hurts to try. Doesn't mean you win, it just means you try. Alright, I think that was my last agenda item, although my agenda is now upside down, so I don't really know if it was my last agenda item, maybe somebody can say.
I think that's it, yeah.
Yes, other than the agenda item that we all look forward to, which is a motion to adjourn, and-
I will move to adjourn.
Jason made that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And can second it, it will vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Stackhausen? Has left the building.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.